We will have a moment of silence followed by Representative Rowe leading us in prayer if you choose to, followed by the pledge and we would appreciate it if you're capable of standing when that happens.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight, for this moment in time. Thank you tonight for our school board allowing to come together. Thank you for our superintendent, our clerk, and members of the media, the parents, the staff, the teachers, our SROs, all that have come tonight to help us to conduct the business of Nottaway County Public Schools. We thank you for your mercy, for your wisdom, for your grace, and for your protection. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda for April 10th? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Awards and recognition, school highlights, ANTC. Dr. Martin?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Grimes. Our highlights this evening come from the Amelia Nottaway Technical Center. Ms. Ledzinski will be showcasing the collision repair technology course this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Get your presentation. Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Grimes, it's Mayor. Our collision program is a two-year program that certifies our students in the art of collision repair. Students learn damage analysis, non-structural analysis, estimating, welding, damage repair, and collision repair technology I, and in collision repair technology II, they continue their repair training by painting, refinishing, and detailing. This is all done in their junior year of this particular course. By their senior year, the students are able to continue with structural repairs and completely repair a vehicle from start to finish. Some of the materials the students are working with include metal refishing and body fillers, and this preps and repairs the panels of the vehicle. At the end of this two-year program, all the students obtain two certifications by the Automotive Service Excellence Collision Repair and Refinish Program. They are the non-structural analysis and damage repair and painting refinishing. Additionally, our program is actually fully nationally accredited through the Automotive Service Excellence Educational Foundation. This is their, sorry, they are accredited in the areas of damage analysis, estimating, and customer service. This is a process is actually every two and a half years goes through a mini renewal, and then every five years it gets fully accredited. Our program is up for renewal full accreditation in 2026. Here are some of our students that are working on one of the students' vehicles. You can see that they are ganning out some of the dents and dings, and at the end of the day, this is what the vehicle looked like. You can see where the hood is, kind of got the collar, it's, I'm sorry, it's a cowl induction hood. I had to ask what that was. I was like, what is that? The student actually completely fabricated himself. So that was a flat hood, and he completely cut out the space, created that little bump for airflow. I was like, well, what does that do? He's like, it just looks cool. Is it okay? You like it, I like it. And completely repainted that. So you can't see it in the picture unfortunately, but the truck itself actually has like these flecks to it, so it almost looks like different colors.
Oh, wow.
This is another vehicle, the gray up there, that gray truck, that's what it looked like before the painting. And the purple again has this flex, and this one is actually really cool because it does change colors as you look at it different lights.
Wow.
And then my favorite pictures. This is my favorite project they did is our ANTC bug. As you can see, the bug, let's just say, was a little used when we got it. The kids completely redid everything. They had to restructure all of the bottom paneling and everything. You can see they started to two-tone paint in the second picture there, and this is what sits out front now. And at the end of the year, this is our senior project, the end of the year, the seniors, all of the completers for ANTC will have a chance to sign their name to leave a lasting impression on ANTC.
Nice.
If you all have not gone by to see this, you really, Mr. Editor.
Billy.
Yes, the kids did a great job tuning it, and it's got this nice little fade from the, from the gold to gray, so.
Nice job.
Will they work on cars from the public, like if a citizen has it, because my wife drove the pickup truck, and a fence jumped out in front of the side of the truck?
Yeah.
Will they buff it out?
Yes, they will. So if you give us a call, we'll have our teachers.
We'll get a good picture of that yellow bug. We'll get a good picture of that bug.
Yep. They are willing to work at ours. I think they're looking for some projects right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Our sports awards, Dr. Grimes?
Before I do the sports awards, I'd just like to add for ANTC that the autobody students also have done some work on our vehicles for Nottaway County Public Schools. When we have had some dings, some dents, some scratches, some imperfections, they have done a fantastic job of doing the repairs on those too. So I think they really do good work under the supervision of Mr. Spradlin, who was the teacher there. All right, Mr. Chair, Board members, it is my absolute pleasure, we are here for our kids, right, and it is always my favorite thing to do to recognize our students for their accomplishments. And at this point in the agenda, we are going to recognize our 2024, 2025 winter sports recognitions, and we will, I understand that some of our students are not here this evening because we are in the spring sports, and we have baseball and softball going on today, but we will recognize them in their absence as well. And as always, Mr. Abbott, we have certificates if you would like to do the honor of handing those out. All right, starting with girls' basketball, we have Anna Lee, who is second team all James River District and second team all region 2A. For boys' basketball, we recognize Jamarien Wright, second team all James River District. And we recognize Xavier McCain, first team all James River District, second team all region 2A. For indoor track, we recognize Bradley Hamilton, all region 2A for the 1600 meter and the 1,000 meter, all state 1600 meter and 1,000 meter, and national qualified 1600 meter and 1,000 meter. And with wrestling, we recognize Colton Lewis, Lewis, first team all district, first team all region, state qualifier. Elliot Waite, first team all district, first team all region, state qualifier. And Brayden Gilamini, second team all district, second team all region.
Our VSB A Regional Art Participants and Winner, Dr. Grimes?
All right. Each year, we participate, and we have students' artwork to be submitted for participation in the Virginia School Boards Association Southside Regional Art Contest. This year, it was held on March 12th at the Regional Southside Meeting, the VSB A. The art contest was started in 1989 to promote the artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. And for each region, there are nine, a winner is chosen for the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And for this year, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the following students whose artwork was submitted to the VSB A art contest and whose work, we had one student who placed, and so that is also a great honor, and we have had a student who placed each year for several years now in this art contest. So first, we'd like to recognize Sofia Ramirez Escalante from Crewe Primary Schools. She is a first grader, and her submission was titled "Mosaic Rainbow." It's beautiful, sweetheart.
Good job.
Good job.
Very good. Excellent.
Right. Can you show it sunny when you're done? Are you okay? Do you have enough?
I can do black arts here.
You get to take this home, or we're gonna.
Next, we recognize our high school entry, Haley Carpenter, a 10th grader, had the entry "Bright Rose" submitted. And also, these kids are talented, yes?
Yes, they are.
Yes, indeed.
Let her see it. Go ahead.
It's not attached. It's not attached. And then this year, we had for the middle school entry, Chase Wilborn, an eighth grader, Packard in the red, and his entry received third place for middle school.
One, two, and three. One more time, one, two, three. Good job. Great painting.
Would you, would you like a really good picture? Congratulations, young man. Now to National Assistant Principals Week, April 7th through the 11th. Dr. Grimes?
Thank you. This week, we recognize our National Assistant Principals. Celebration of the unsung heroes in our education system. Dedicated folks work tirelessly to bolster teachers, motivate students, support their principal, create a positive learning environment, and face the many unpredictable challenges that land on their desk. Our assistant principals play a crucial role, and this week is a dedicated time to recognize them for their hard work and commitment to our schools, students, and profession. Each of our assistant principals received a little certificate recognition of their role here in Nottaway County Public Schools, just thanking them for what it is that we do on a daily basis. And I ask that you all join us in celebrating these incredible school leaders.
And on to the 2025 SVRTC Award. That stands for Southside Virginia Regional Technology Consortium. Dr. Martin?
Good evening again. Each year, individuals are selected to represent Nottaway as part of the Southside Virginia Regional Technology Consortium. I have the privilege to present to the board these individuals that have helped to advance technology or provide technology support within our school division. Individuals are recognized as either a technology teacher, the instructional support for technology support in those areas, and they were recognized back in March at the annual banquet that they have. But, so first, and I want to tell you a little bit about him, is Steve Ledger. So Steve is our computer technology guru at this point, all things technology. Steve's expertise and proactive approach to supporting technology makes him highly deserving of this award. His quick learning and his adaptability, he's mastered the role swiftly, providing efficient and effective technology support across the district. Technology prepares, repairs, he supports teachers by quickly diagnosing and repairing technology issues, ensuring minimal disruption to learning. There's a lot of collaboration with the tech team, which is very small, it's just a few of us, but he works very closely with the tech team to resolve issues and implement solutions for the district's technology needs. He is overseeing our Google domain merger that we are in the process of doing, so he's the main point of contact and lead in the integration of the Google domain merger project, improving district-wide technology systems that we have. And he provides support across all five schools in the district. He provides comprehensive support to five schools, including fixing student devices, deploying devices for students and teachers, and maintaining all of those new line boards that I know he so loves when they come in and he gets to put them all together. So I present to you Steve Ledger.
So our Instructional Technology Support Award goes to Janelle Terry.
She's a teacher at the Intermediate School, and I have to say, she's a former student of mine, so I'm so proud of her. Janelle's dedication to the professional growth and her ability to support the integration of Mastery Connect makes her highly deserving of this award. She supports technology by doing the following across the division for us. She's a teacher leader in Mastery Connect. She serves as a key leader for us, guiding teachers and staff through the effective use of the platform to monitor and track student progress. Training in small groups, she provides targeted training to small groups, ensuring staff are equipped with the knowledge to use Mastery Connect effectively. She has provided school-wide trainings. She leads the professional development sessions, supporting school staff in understanding how to use it for student success. And she's offered individualized trainings for people, giving one-on-one support, tailoring the training to the individual teacher needs to ensure optimal use of Mastery Connect. And then the collaboration with the administrators. She works closely with the school administration to integrate Mastery Connect across the buildings, ensuring consistent implementation and support for data-driven decision-making, as well as working with our Mastery Connect representative to support the learning. So I present to you Janelle Terry. And finally, and I do not think she is here this evening, the Technology Teacher Award goes to Ashley Duncan Staylor at Nottaway Middle School. She may be to track me tonight, I'm not sure, because I think she does track. But the areas that she has supported in the use of technology in her classroom, she uses Desmos to help students visualize and explore complex mathematical concepts promoting interactive learning. She seamlessly integrates technology with math instruction to enhance learning and reinforce traditional methods. She maximizes the use of Chromebooks to support student-centered learning, providing access to resources and assignments. She incorporates the Waycom tablet for hands-on interaction with mathematical content, allowing monitoring and facilitation of math learning. So if you want to know what a Waycom tablet is, it is a tablet that she can walk around the classroom with to monitor students while she's displaying and writing on the board for them to see the math instruction, instead of having to go to the board every time and write. So she integrates that in the classroom. She integrates tools like the new line panels and other resources, creating an engaging, interactive classroom environment that meets diverse students' needs. So of course, I'd like to highlight Ms. Ashley Duncan Staylor at the middle school.
And the Nottaway County Public School Top Employer for Interns Award.
So we learned about this right before spring break. The official notification came out on April 1st, and Nottaway County Public Schools was selected as a Top Employer for Interns Award. Nottaway County Public Schools has been recognized as the recipient of the 2025 Top Employers for Interns Award through the Virginia Talent and Opportunity Partnership for Region 3. This award recognizes the commitment to providing work-based learning opportunities for students through internship offerings. In addition to recognizing the Division for the Outstanding Honor, I have to recognize Devon Foster. He's not able to be here, he's at a conference this evening or the rest of this week, and he's now Dr. Devon Foster. So for his unwavering support of that internship program, I brought that idea to Devon several years ago, and I can say he hit the ground running with it and has made it extremely successful for our students. The program and the opportunities for our students continue to grow through his dedication and commitment to that program. So congratulations to Nottaway County Public Schools for being recognized as the Top Employer for Interns.
Next is delegations from the public.
Mr. Chairman, we have one of our students walk in that was awarded. Can we acknowledge him, please?
One athlete.
Athletes.
I'd be happy to, I gave all of the certificates to his principal.
Yeah, I think he gave them.
This is kind of referred to as an early warning mugshot with the, so you have to come here, pull that strip it up, you're good right there.
You kept robbing the basket was good on the last game.
Delegations from the public, just a brief note, board members generally will not respond to comments made during delegations from the public during regular board meetings, however, if there is actionable material presented, there will be follow-up. And the person that is on our list is Audrey Brown?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I want to thank you guys for letting me come up and speak, and I promise I won't be before you long, but there's three items that I feel I need to talk about, and I am, I do admit, I am late to the plate, okay? I am late, so, you know, whenever you can, if you don't mind, I'd like some, you know, just a response or whatever. Okay, my first item is the Burkeville feasibility update. In your plans for the school, I would like you to think about the use, take the existing use into consideration. Since the school has closed, the building has become a place of public service. We have feed more pantry there, there's a physical mental health classes and exercise, if that's what your thing is, physical exercise. So just consider these things, consider it as a community center in your future plans, okay? One of the reasons why we want the pantry is because there is no other building in Nottaway County with the electrical capacity to handle the freezers, okay? The elderly people walk around the gym, they come in between the hours of whenever the registrar is open, they walk around the gym, they communicate, and then they leave, okay? So that's another reason why we want it open. All right. My other issue is, it's not an issue, in our superintendent's search, the education of our children should be more important than personal agendas. We need a superintendent who has our children's education future first and foremost, and can maneuver through the new laws and policies and reduction in funding. This person needs to ensure Nottaway County Public Schools, number one, maintains accreditation, two, ensures the quality of education such that it increases our students' ability to compete in any market or on any playing field, and three, ensure a positive attitude and atmosphere conducive to the educating and learning. We need the best for our children and not, you know, just any old body for our community, okay? The other thing, just a little pet peeve of mine, last meeting, the, there was a substitute update, and there was a database, and I did not hear from the presenter whether or not, what was the rotation cycle on this database, okay? Did the database start each day on number one, or did day two start at the last person it called in that day, okay? Also, as part of the rotation cycle, I did not hear whether or not the cycle resets after a 30-day call up, right? So that's it. I thank you very much for listening to me, and like I said, I am late to the game. If any of these issues are off track, just let me know, and we'll deal with them another way, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come speak to us.
Yes, thank you.
May I have a motion for the consent agenda? So move. Or a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of the 25-26 Local Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, follow-through, application and report. Dr. Lewis.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Grimes. I'm before you this evening, requesting approval for the 25-26 Annual Special Education Plan. The plan is a component of the Virginia Department of Education's way of ensuring that the local educational agencies are in compliance with the implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Federal Implementation Regulations. The Division's expenditure budget includes a local and state contribution towards special education services with the amount of $2,624,226,081. This is the total based on last year's funding, as we are still awaiting next year's allocation to be released. Local funds must be used prior to us accessing the federal 611 funds. The IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, Section 611, grant funds will be expended to help offset the costs associated with personnel salaries, benefits of six special education teachers, one paraprofessional, a car driver, or day placements. In addition to personnel funds, in addition, personnel funds will be used to provide occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision, speech and language therapy, as well as professional development for students working with students that will be identified under the Comprehensive Coordinated Educational, you know, Early Intervention Services, which we call CCEIS, but I make sure I brought the, what it stands for. Materials and supplies will be purchased to support students with disabilities as well. The grant also requires a proportionate share of funds to be set aside to offset the costs associated with providing speech and language therapy for students who enrolled in private day schools, private schools like Kinston and those home school within the Division. In addition to our IDEA, Part B, Section 619, grant funds will be expended to help offset the cost of one early childhood special education teacher and the cost of providing occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy to our preschool students with disabilities. In addition to personnel funds, funds will be used to provide materials and supplies for those students that are in our early childhood special education program. Therefore, I'm requesting that the board approve our 2025-2026 Annual Special Education Plan for next year.
May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Now's the time if you have questions.
What is the amount on that again?
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Calendar adjustment request.
Dr. Martin.
The invisible Dr. Gregor.
Good evening again. So this evening, we are recommending a minor adjustment to the 24-25 school calendar that would move the last day of school for students from Friday, June 6th to Thursday, June 5th, and the last day for teachers from Monday, June 9th to Friday, June 6th. This recommendation is made with confidence that the Division has met and will continue to exceed the minimum instructional hour requirement set forth in the Code of Virginia. Therefore, no instructional time will be compromised as a result of this change. In addition to meeting statutory requirements, this adjustment offers several benefits. It provides a clear and natural end to the school year for both students and staff, rather than requiring teachers to return the following Monday for a single workday. It allows the custodial and maintenance staff to begin summer cleaning and preparations on Monday, June 9th, without overlap or disruption caused by staff still being in the buildings. It supports end-of-year planning and transitions, helping school administrators and support teams coordinate summer programming and facility use more effectively and efficiently. And it ultimately improves staff morale by concluding the year on a Friday, aligning with the traditional weekly work cycles and supporting personnel travel or family planning. This is contingent on us not missing any additional days between now and the end of the school year, so I request your permission to adjust the calendar.
I need a motion to approve the adjustment conditionally.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now for information items. Sergeant Sawyer. Sergeant Sawyer, who is our lead or supervisor?
Supervisor.
SRO currently assigned to the high school.
Yes, and first, I just want to take this time to thank Dr. Grimes and the school board for allowing me to come and speak, and to thank Dr. Grimes for allowing us to utilize the building last Friday, which was very successful. The county, we did a countywide mass casualty here at the school. We train so that we can be prepared. We don't ever want that to happen. We prepare for that not to happen, but we want to be prepared in case it ever does. It was very successful, and I just want to take this time, I took my high school kids who came out on Friday of the last day of spring break, they volunteered to come out here and spend eight hours with us. And I just want to take this time to thank them high school kids, they know who they are, for them coming out and being able to play. Without them, the training wouldn't have gone off as well as it did, having them to be able to exit the building. We did everything that the school would have done in case of an emergency. So I just want to take that time and thank you guys for allowing us to use up the building.
Don't sell yourself short. I mean, that training was, it was well thought out, well-intentioned, and it was no holes barred with the prosthetics, the blood, the materials, the supplies necessary to carry people if necessary. So, you know, don't sell short what it was that you did just by saying we had a training and it was successful. You all went all in, as though it were a real event that occurred, and yet the kids were here, taking part in it and wearing the prosthetics and, you know, going all in with what it was they were doing too. But I think it's important for the community and the board to recognize that this wasn't just a paper event.
Right.
It wasn't just a sit-down and talk about it, but you guys actually went through, walking kids out, protecting them in case of a need to evacuate a building, all of it. So it's not my presentation, but...
Right, no, I do appreciate that. The recognition is appreciated. I will tell you, we hadn't done something countywide like that in a long time, and it was a long time coming. The county needs to be proud, they came together, we did our job, and thank you, Dr. Grimes, again. And so what I'm asking on that part is if the board will allow us use of the facility every year, during that timeframe, we will clean the building. I was mopping floors. I will make sure that your building is clean and prepared for the next week of school. But if the board would approve allowing the sheriff's office and the county of Nottaway to be able to use and train every year, I will make sure we coordinate it, and we will have a training every year so that we can be prepared and be as safe as possible.
Great idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The other reason I'm here, and I understand times are hard, school board, board supervisors, financially, we are in some hard times. I understand that, and for me to come up here and ask you guys for any kind of financial backing is, it was hard for me to do it. Last year, I put on a summer camp through Virginia Rules, and that is through the Department of, hold on one second. Yeah, DCJS, and actually, it's actually put on through the general's office. He funds it. He gives us a grant that we apply for, it's a reimbursable grant, for anywhere between $5,000 and $7,000. I was able to get that grant last year, and we put the camp on. The camp was a huge success. I had parents burning my phone up, asking why their child wasn't there. It was a pilot program. And you know what a pilot program is? We just did it as a trial run to see how successful the program would be. I gave pictures, I'm hoping all you guys got to look at the pictures. They don't even do it justice to what we were able to accomplish that week and still educate our children during the summer. When I first moved here, and I'm not from here, I moved here and planted my roots here in Nottaway County, I'm from Dinwiddie. And one of the things I realized was, and a lot of the first meetings I came, was that we're not doing things for the kids from the board meetings. So I took that opportunity, and the SRO Division has done this, and we started it, and we spent the $5,000 reimbursable grant, we were reimbursed. The reason I'm coming to you tonight is because that money is not guaranteed, that reimbursable $5,000 is not guaranteed. I'm going to apply for the grant again, I'm working on it right now as we speak. I'm asking not just you guys, the school board, but I'm also going to be asking the board next week for $3,600 every year to help me fund this camp. That will put 100 kids in the camp, and we can partner with y'all on how to select these children, where y'all can continue to let me select them the way we've been doing, seeing kids in need and putting them in this program. The reason I'm saying 36, you're saying, well, that's more than the 5,000, is because that 5,000 did 44 children last year. This year, I want to go to 100. We're ready. I've got five SROs, myself and the other four others, who care about these children and want to spend a summer, a week in the summer with them, teaching them about laws, saying no to drugs, saying no to being made to do things because it's part of the cool crowd. We had children, listen, we had 20 children out of the 44 who had never been fishing, not a day in their life, and they all caught fish that week, and the smiles on their face. And it might seem small, but to that child, when he came to school, he was talking, she was talking, they were quiet in school, they opened up and made friends. So the program, to me, and maybe I'm tooting my own horn, but it was so successful that I begged the sheriff to let me do this every year, and he gave me the go-ahead. But I can't do it without your guys' help. Again, I don't know what the board's going to tell me. I know what they've been saying in meetings, I'm sure y'all have seen it. I'm asking for $3,600, and what that goes to is every child gets a camp shirt, this is our camp shirt for this year, I just got it finished and designed. Every child gets a T-shirt. We feed the children, we have to get it catered, we don't want to, you know, feed the kids anything that's wrong and make them sick. So we hire an agency that is insured and brings out the food. And the cost just in the food is around $3,000. And it's going to be a little bit more as I'm going for 100 kids, I haven't gotten my quote back yet, I can just tell you that it was at $3,000 last year. The money also pays for arts and crafts, it pays for fishing tackle and gear for them to be able to fish. We partnered with, you see them there, Virginia Department of Gaming and Fisheries, they come out and they do demonstration for a day. They teach the kids how to fish, the laws of fishing, and get them loving the outdoors. I will tell you this, number one, thank you all for the cell phone policy, awesome job. Number two, that whole week, we never saw a cell phone, and that was before we did the policy on cell phones. Not one time did a child bring a cell phone out that entire week, and it was so wonderful to see. So I just, I'm asking for $3,600 from each agency, if you can find it in somewhere.
Let me try this. Let me move, or ask for a motion to appropriate $3,600 through our finance director with the approval of the superintendent if funds are available.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's as good as we can do right now.
And last thing is, I haven't been up here to talk to you guys in two years, so if you guys have any questions about the program, I brought some notes and stuff, so I have some answers for you guys. So shoot them at me if you've got anything.
Where do you fish?
Well, ah, I fish the Ithamatics River, I'm a river fisher.
The camp.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, the camp is held at... We all know you fish. So it's probably, some of you will probably remember it as Woodsman's Campground, and some of you will probably know it as Mullins and Stark Campground. Stark is now pulled out, so it's just Mullins Campground. So that's where, it's got a nice little pond right there, and stacked full of fish, so...
They stay a whole week?
So we don't stay nights. That's, as we go through the years, the high school kids have begged me for an overnight camp, but I've got to find a way to fund that. I'll work on that later, but we stay just during the day.
Just during the day, okay.
Yeah, but the high school kids have asked me, because what we do is we do fourth grade to ninth grade, and it's a cutoff there. The high schools want me to do a three-night stay, and they want to have the same kind of program, just be able to stay the night. So I'm going to work on that as the years go on, as long as we keep being successful and this program is working, so...
How do you transport them? How are they transported?
Dr. Grimes utilized, we utilized a school bus last year. Mr. Rash was our bus driver. He met them here at 6:45, I mean, 7:45, picked them up, and brought them to the facility, picked them up at 3:45, and handed them back here at 4:00. We had a law enforcement officer follow the bus, was stationed here in the mornings and followed the bus in the evenings, make sure all of our children got home safe and sound. And that was just for the moms that couldn't bring, or moms or dads couldn't bring them to the camp. A lot of them did ride the bus, yes. Anything else?
Well, as a board, I'll speak for the board without them saying so, but we all truly appreciate what the SROs do in our schools.
Yes, indeed.
It, I mentioned this before, I visited the middle school and the SR, or the intermediate school, and the SRO was out in the rain, it was cold in the rain, and he greeted every child with either a fist bump or he got a hug. That's not unusual for the SROs. They're active throughout the school system, throughout the complex and at the two primary schools. I mean, it's, we're fortunate to have the dedicated officers that we have.
And that's thanks to you guys allowing us to be able to be part of your family, and we're going to continue to do as y'all, anytime y'all need us, we're going to be there. Rest assured that, as long as, as long as I'm here and in charge of making sure we can get that stuff done, I've worked very closely with Dr. Grimes, and we've been able to accomplish everything that she's asked us to do, we've been there for, so... Thank you.
Appreciate the fact that you guys did this training, but the thing that's going on with schools, you guys come up here to do that, we, some of us got children in school, and I am so thankful that you all took the time out to do that, really.
Yes, indeed. And that's why we asked for the facility, because we want to do a three-day event. We want to do, I did some research on the, what other places were doing it, and they're doing it in three days, because I had planned for a three-day, a three-event, we were going to use the high school, middle school, intermediate. And because we were so intense, as Dr. Grimes was saying, doing the training, we didn't even have time to do the third event. So that's why we're asking if we can have access to the facility that week so that we can do more extensive, make sure we get all them events accomplished, because we don't want to do just one event. We want to do, like, we, just for example, we used a Parkland shooting as, but we added another shooter that would hit away. And we did use our dog, and we tracked into the woods. So things like that, and we want to be able to get as many events as we can so that we can be trained. And Dr. Grimes, as you said, we were carrying, we have new carriers that Buddy Hyde, the emergency coordinator, got in on a grant, and that was the first time they were utilized, and they worked perfect. They really did. So thank y'all, thank y'all for thinking for that, yeah.
I would like to extend a vote of confidence to our esteemed financial director, Mrs. Heather Meyer, that she will be able to find the funds necessary to fund this...
No pressure.
No pressure. Just a little pressure whatsoever.
And I'm, perhaps shouldn't challenge this, but I challenge our Board of Supervisors, if we can find the money for something this important. We talk about making a difference in community, we talk about... in community, we talk about we want better children, we talk about we want a better community. The only way you're going to get a better community is to invest in your community. I know funds are tight, I get it, I see the numbers.
Yes.
Our personal funds are tight. Multiple families are working multiple jobs to make ends meet. But we have to invest and find $3,600. So I challenge our board of supervisors to meet us in the middle.
That's right. We'll cover a little bit of it here in a little bit, but thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Our esteemed finance director, our feasibility study update.
I actually do not have an update. I was not able to get any information from our architect, she was on vacation this week, so I will hope to have something to you all soon.
All right. How about a budget update?
You have that.
That budget update, is there $3,600 extra?
That was too soon to tell.
And it's what?
She'll find it in the turnip, she'll find it in the turnip in the corner.
Yes.
So this is just a budget update as of the end of the third quarter of the school year. Sorry, my eyeball is itching a little bit, my allergies are driving me nuts, so bear with me. So year-to-date, we've received about 71% of our operating revenue. This does not include any grant revenue, this is just strictly our operating revenue with our state and local and our federal ROTC funds, and then any other funds we get. But you notice our other fund category is slightly elevated. A good chunk of that is insurance payments for damaged vehicles that we've turned around, had to pay out, have fixed, or some other, you know, insurance things that we've had over the years. So that's a little inflated, not normally that high. Just randomly, things sometimes happen. But overall, we are about where, almost to the 75% mark, which is kind of where we should be at this point in the year, being in our fourth quarter. For expenditure update, there again, we have spent 73% of our anticipated budget for the year. Now you will see, there again, our operations and maintenance is a little bit high, there again, we've had some unexpected repairs that we have had to do this year. So we are a little bit high on that. Typically, we hit the 100% mark with them around the May mark, so we're a little early on that. So, you know, we'll be tracking that hard and heavy over the next quarter, just to make sure that we do not go over that too much. But overall, as a whole, we are about right where we need to be. So we've got about, you know, 25% of our budget left going into the last quarter of the year, which is typically, some spending starts to decrease a little bit, just because, you know, we're wrapping up things and ending things. So that's kind of where we're at, just within revenue and expenditures. I know one of the biggest things that you're interested in is kind of where we're at with ADM and what that means for budget. As of March 31st, our ADM was at 1,668.39. What does that mean for us? Well, that, that means it's going to be a reduction in our budget of approximately $572,000. And I say, could be. We don't have a signed state budget yet. We know that there's amendments in the state budget that'll affect not only this school year, but next school year. So until we have that, that, that number is subject to change. Now, I did base it upon the current General Assembly amended budget, because based upon the amendments that the governor recommended, he didn't really take away a lot of the stuff for education, he did add some stuff for education, so I kind of based it off of that, just to see where we would be. But it does look like it's about a reduction of about $572,000 as of right now. So once we get the final signed bill, and I get the final count tool from the state, then I'll be able to know exactly to any what that reduction is going to be. So that is where we are at for the year. My next project is determining where we will be June 30th. And that number's too early to tell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you seen a benefit from contracting the contracted service of vehicles?
We have seen a benefit. One, our drivers love them, but it's also nice to have something that, that is driving around town that actually has our logo on it. But it, it's, it's nice to be able to take some older vehicles that are just not as stable anymore off the road, and be able to put some of our students that we're transporting in vehicles that are more apt to be on the road, and more, you know, safer to be out there. But overall, over, you know, a three-year period, we will save ourselves a decent amount of money, and I hope that we can be able to continue to fund, so over the years, we can continue to weed out some of our old vehicles. I will say, and I cannot remember off the top of my head, there's actually a city here in Virginia, they've been using Enterprise for their fleet management now for five years, and it completely self-funds itself. So they no longer have anything that comes out of their budget. With the constant cycle of selling the cars and getting new, it's basically funded itself at this point. And that is something that I would like to strive towards, that way we can always have the safest vehicles on the road for our students who are being transported in cars. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Update on the 21st Century Grants. Dr. Martin?
This evening, our site coordinators, Ms. Nelson at Crewe Primary, and Ms. Clary at Blackstone Primary, Ms. Sapp could not be here this evening, she's the intermediate middle school coordinator, are going to share some updates on the 21st Century programs at their schools, the benefits, and the progress of the work within the programs. Also, the opportunities this grant provides for our children, and some of the upcoming activities they have. We are approaching the year, the end of year two, and we'll be in our final year of the grant next school year. So the '25, '26 is the last year of this grant for us. I do have to commend our site coordinators for the work that they do with the programming in each of their buildings, and ensuring that activities are aligned with academic standards. They have exceeded their student attendance expectations this year. They have more kids, I think, some days than they know what to do with. They still have more kids every day wanting to participate. So I do have to commend them for all of the work that they do to ensure that this program runs very successfully for our children. So I'm going to turn it over to them now.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Grimes, and guests. My name is Jennifer Nelson, I'm the school librarian at Crewe Primary School, as well as the site coordinator. Ms. Melissa Clary is a third-grade teacher at Blackstone Primary School, as well as the coordinator at Blackstone. And Robin Sapp, who isn't here with us this evening, is the school librarian for the middle school, as well as the coordinator for the intermediate and middle school. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. Our 21st Century program objectives, as you can see, this year for reading and math, during the 2024 school year, 80% of regular program participants, those attending 30 or more days, will demonstrate improved performance on the Standards of Learning Assessments in reading and math. For discipline, by June 2025, 50% of students participating in the 21st Century Program for 30 or more days will show a 10% decrease in school suspensions, as evidenced by behavior records. And for attendance, by the end of the 2024, 2025 school year, 90% of all students participating in the program will maintain good school attendance by remaining under 10% of the chronic absenteeism rate of 10%. At this time, Nottaway County Public School has met or exceeded the state's objectives for this school year.
So a little update about Blackstone Primary School. At our present time, for the morning program, we proudly serve 21 students that attend regularly. While our afternoon program has grown to accommodate 189 students...
A lot.
It is a lot. Furthermore, we are pleased to announce that the recent addition of 25 new students through our SOL boot camp, which is targeted for our third and fourth graders to get geared, to get in gear for our SOLs. And the growth reflects our commitment to providing remediation and enriching educational opportunities for all of our students. On that slide right here, you have a presentation, a video. This is our enrichment group, it's called Pride Stomp and Shake. They participated at the youth league basketball games on a Saturday, which they don't have to do, and all the girls showed up. It's mostly second graders and first graders who participate, and they really love dancing and cheering at the games. Some of our remediation groups, we have first through fourth grade, which is Monday through Thursday. They are led by grade-level teachers. At this time, they do tier two and tier three instruction. Any type of small group, or any student that didn't get that, that tier three instruction during school hours, they can get it at this time. We do reading remediation with our librarian, she does it with all the students who have a reading plan. It is very, sometimes it's with our first graders, sometimes it's with our third graders. And then our SOL boot camp is our third and our fourth graders, and is led by our third and fourth grade teachers. And as I stated, that's one of our enrichment programs, is our Pride Stomp and Shake. We also have Boys Club, who is led by Mr. Folks, he is one of our first-grade teachers. Our Kindness Club, who is led by our school counselor, and our STEM, our STEM activities, who is led by our counselor and one of our STEM teachers. And STEM is led through Southside on Monday and Tuesday as well.
At Crewe Primary School, at present, our morning program has 28 students, our afternoon program has 108 students, and our, we recently had 40 students between our third and fourth grade in our Spark SOL prep program, which again is specifically for our third and fourth graders as they prepare for the upcoming SOLs. I wanted to highlight our 25 dedicated staff members, including Tammy Abel. We have our bus drivers, our secretary and cafeteria workers, classroom teachers and assistants. Even Mr. Page has gotten involved by leading some wrestling classes for our wrestling club. So it truly is a collaborative effort that makes our program a success. We as well have our remediation programs, we have Alexia Zern program, utilizing some of the programs that we have in our classrooms this year to help enrich, and our SOL boot camp as well. We have a Palms Group, which is led by Ms. Epps, one of our pre-K teachers, our sportsmanship program, and we have the STEAM program as well. Here is our sportsmanship program, they have really enjoyed having a kickball club, and so we've been working a lot. A lot of our other grades have gotten involved with our third and fourth grade group, and that's been really nice to see our big kids taking some of the younger kids under their wing, not only to kind of show them how to play kickball, but also to show them, you know, how to be a good example and a good sport. This is Ms. Abel's class, they read the book Balloons Over Broadway, and then they created their own little parade balloons at Thanksgiving time. And then we also wanted to talk about our partnership with SVCC, who does our STEM programs on Monday and Tuesday, but they also have our family events. Generally, those are Friday evenings, we have one coming up tomorrow, actually. But they also do a couple on Saturdays as well. And we've done programs such as the Olympics, we did Boston Tea Party, Optical Illusions, and they also are in charge of our summer camp, our STEM camp, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes. I wanted to highlight one of our students this evening, this is Khalil Brown. And so Khalil is in Ms. Abel's class, and he is an amazing artist. And so he has drawn, they did a dinosaur unit recently, and so he has drawn some of the dinosaurs that they learned about in Ms. Abel's class. So he has prepared a little speech to tell you about some of the things they learned about.
I want to tell you, I, I want to tell you about my after-school fun in 21st Century. One of my favorite things is doing Zoom meetings with Ms. Abel. We do cool projects, like making Easter baskets and clay animals. I also love learning about bees and bugs, they are so cool. Sometimes we take brain breaks, we dance, and get our wiggles out. It is super fun. We also play with toys, draw and make things. I learned to draw dinosaurs and volcanoes. I made some special ones for you today.
All right. Very well.
Yes.
If anyone thinks bugs are cool, it's all right with me.
You drew that?
Go ahead, look at that.
They're really good.
Can I get a picture?
Look at that.
Do you want to go down and show them?
Look at that.
Can I get a picture of it? Can you step back just a little bit for me, please?
Go ahead.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Really good work.
Oh, it is.
One of the cool things that they did after their dinosaur unit was they got these 3D dinosaurs from Ms. Abel's cousin, as a print shirt.
Sure that's not real?
Good gracious, go ahead.
Which one is your favorite?
All right.
That sticks a bit hard.
Go ahead.
Good job.
You look like a stick.
I'm going to speak on behalf of Ms. Sapp, since she's not here tonight. So Nottaway Intermediate School boosts 104 registered students with an average monthly attendance of 32. Meanwhile, Nottaway Middle School has 63 registered students and an average weekly attendance of 16. Some of the favorite activities among our participants include sewing, arts and crafts, basketball, and cooking. There are a few pictures that she plotted. And as well, she had a student by the name of Chase Wilburn, who would like to come up and tell you a little bit about it.
I would like to say that for the Nottaway Middle School 21st Century Program, that students are allowed to learn, get help from teachers, and they're just allowed to have fun.
All right.
Nice.
Pretty good artwork.
Yes, indeed.
All right, and then the last component that we wanted to share with you, one of the, one of my favorite parts of 21st Century has been participating in the summer STEM camp. So every summer, our students in grades two through six that are enrolled in the program have the chance to enjoy eight days at the Keyesville campus. And we work with the three ladies during the year who teach our Monday and Tuesday STEM, who also do our family programs. They are the same people that we work with during the summer, and they do a lot of hands-on, engaging opportunities for our students. So each week through the summer, they showcase a distinct theme. Some of the themes that we've done are around the world, where they pretended to be stewardesses, and we learned about different places in countries around the world, critter connections, where we've learned about different animals, flight, where you'll see later on, we got the experience of an actual helicopter coming and landing on the lawn at SVCC. We built, we built, not parachutes, hot air balloons, thank you. We learned about bees, that was the first year that we worked with them, and I honestly have learned so, so much through the program. One of my favorites was CSI, where we had a bomb squad come in and a drug sniffing dog. So you're going to see, what my favorite was, when the bomb squad come, came in, and you're going to see that in the video. So some of the themes that we've done was a medieval theme. These are some of our kids. We do have, some days, depending when SVCC is closed, such as Juneteenth, where the kids stay here, and we do activities related to either the theme with SVCC, or we have activities for them as well. One of our teachers, a few years ago... One of our teachers, a few years ago, was hiking, and so she taught them about setting up tents and how she survives out on the trail and how to pack a backpack and things like that. This was during our crew adaptations on the left, and then on the right, they learned to play Oregon Trail. So that was fun. During our space unit, this was our group that we had from Crew Primary School. We do take field trips as well, so this was at the 4H camp. During this one, we were connecting it with a Magic Treehouse book, and they had to build a structure that would withstand a tornado. We've done some where they brought in a leaf blower, and they had to construct a structure around themselves and see if they could stay in the structure without being blown away by a leaf blower. So it's very hands-on. Here's our helicopter experience and our hot air balloon, and to go out with a bang.
Nice.
That's all we have for you. Have any questions for us?
Love the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Amazing stuff.
Okay, ANT C report, Mr. Outlaw?
Yes, things at ANT C have been and continue to move along very well under Ms. Slidzinski's principalship. Recently, all of the nurse assistants have completed their clinicals, and here in the next week or so, will go on to take their written examination, so that's very exciting. Probably the most exciting thing, something that's been in the works for a while, but we have hired a person to begin a carpentry class, and that will begin the first of next year. And really, really excited about that.
Thank you. GSSV report, Duncan?
Well, it's hard to top that one, but I think we have many students who are going to be very happy for multiple reasons, and that is graduation is next month. So our students will not only graduate with their, I don't have the exact number, I do, I ask your forgiveness for that, but we have multiple students who will graduate not only with their high school diploma, but also with their degree.
Thank you, and you can continue on with the SEAC report.
Yes, we had our last meeting of the school year, April the 8th. The information that Dr. Lewis presented was presented to the SEAC team, which did include all of the figures, the data, the number. In addition to that, they did review a digital portfolio that has been shared to all special education staff. The digital portfolio enables anyone from teachers to parents to help navigate special education when it comes to transition services. There is a, a final update from the federal monitoring, the standard, regular federal monitoring that all schools must complete, should be completed in May. Between May and August, actions will be planned for any changes that need to be made based upon the recommendations by VDOE, and then effective August, all adjustments necessary will be made. And then finally, in June, they intend on sending out plans for scheduling for the remainder of the meetings. Again, I implore families who have students who receive special education services to become involved. The SEAC wants to schedule it around the family's schedule, but in order to schedule it around the family's schedule, they have to have the family's input. So it's kind of hard to make a schedule when you don't know what to make it for. So again, anybody could always reach out to me, they can reach out to the school board office and receive more information.
Thank you. Our superintendent's report, Dr. Grimes?
Sir, both our student liaison and our alternate had conflicts tonight. One of those students is an athlete and is with the softball team, which has a game, had a game this evening in Cumberland, if memory serves me correctly. So that is the explanation for the absence there. As you heard earlier this week, we recognized our assistant principals for, as a part of the National Appreciation Week. Each one received a certificate created by Ms. Wood and then presented to the assistant principals on behalf of school administration, school board administration for the work that they do. We've heard SOL testing referenced a number of times tonight, and it's because we are certainly in that time of the year where testing is right upon us. It starts next week at the high school for what is referred to as term grads, and basically what that means is we might have, we do have some high school seniors who need to have a verified credit in order to graduate. So the state requires, in order for a student to earn a diploma, that they have to receive a certain number of verified credits. And a verified credit is received when the student both passes a class and the SOL that goes with that class. We have students who pass the class but not the SOL. And I had a conversation with a primary school parent today about SOLs, when the parent's comment was along the lines that, you know, the SOLs don't prepare the kids for anything. And I said, I tried to explain that the SOLs are not designed to test, to prepare them for something. It's an assessment of how they're able to apply their skills and their knowledge. And we know that there are many people who can do whatever it is that's put before them, but when you give them a test, whether it's on paper or a computer screen, it's a little more difficult for them to do. So we do have some students who struggle to pass the SOLs, but these SOL tests that we give for what we call term grads allow students the opportunity to test early so that if they need to test again, they have time to do so before graduation, so that we maximize their opportunity to be able to walk across the stage when it's time to do so. And then May 6th through 24th is the testing window for all of the SOLs, for all subjects that have SOLs assigned to them. So we are, you know, coming up on the end of the school year, and testing is a big part of that. We do ask that kids come to school on time for the testing. We want them to come to school on time all the time, but when we have tests, there's no time limit on the tests, and we want the kids to come on time to have the maximum opportunity to test, to be able to eat or to come already having eaten, so that they, their bodies are also physically prepared for the test, and that they be allowed to have as much time to relax and sort of get into it when it's time to test. Because testing is serious, you all are well aware that much of our school's accreditation status is based upon what happens that one day that they take this particular subject. So there is a lot of pressure on the school's system for students to do well on the SOL test. And then, as a reminder, I have been saying this to the board in the updates, email updates for a while, but Teacher Appreciation Week is the first week in May. Our principals have activities planned. The school board office recognizes our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, and I know that at least one board member has expressed to the board a desire to also recognize teachers during that week on behalf of the board. So I remind you again that the first week in May is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Dr. Grimes. Other matters of school board interest, the Nottaway County School Board will conduct interviews for the position of superintendent from April 14th, 2025 to April 28th, 2025. These interviews will be held in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23712. In essence, that means they'll be done in closed session or executive session. On May 29th, 2025, the ANT C Joint Board Meeting at 6:30 at the Tech Center. April 23rd, 2025, School Board Work Session, that's at 6:00 PM. May 10th is the Southside Virginia Community College Graduation. May 28th, we have a School Board Work Session. On June 25th, there is a School Board Work Session. Are there any other items that need to be discussed? I'll start with Mrs. Duncan.
No, not at this time.
Mr. Wilson?
Not at this time.
Mr. Rowe?
Not at this time.
Mr. Outlaw?
Yes. Earlier today, Mr. Abbott and myself went to Blackstone Primary School and sat in on their Professional Leadership Community Meeting, where the principal, Ms. Painter, and members of her staff and Dr. Martin were present, and they went over how the school is progressing and very up-to-date information. But I think the biggest takeaway that I got from this was the excitement of the teachers, and you could see that, you know, with the students. I mean, they were all excited about the program and what it's doing to improve Blackstone Primary, so thank you very much. And I would encourage all of the board members, when you can, to find out when these events, and they're happening on a pretty regular basis, but sit in on one or two of them. It's very important.
I appreciate that. I have attended two PLC meetings so far this portion of the year. They are interesting. It's been a long time since I've been in school, but you learn something. And not only that, I have the opportunity to share with those teachers and staff that are there, how much they are appreciated for what they do. Also, Crew Primary Schools and Nottaway Intermediate Schools will hold a Math Night. It's one of those activities, it'll be at the Alura Banquet Hall. There are prizes, math activities for pre-K through the sixth grade. And that's on April 15th from 5 to 7. On April 17th, from 5 to 7, at the Food Lion in Blackstone, the Blackstone Primary School, again, pre-K, through will have a lot of student activities, snacks and so on. Not to be outdone, the Nottaway High School on May 17th will have a lot of fun, I believe. Encourage the board to become targets for cream massages, I'll call it. There's going to be a lot of other activities, May 17th. In addition to that, I took on the assignment of handling policies E, K, and then a small portion of the J policies. I have reviewed those. I have shared with Dr. Grimes three that I think need to be reviewed, just to ensure that they are current with all of the changes in electronic devices and so on, especially KBAE, which is predominantly the FOIA policy, that it covers the electronic data materials. And KGB, which is the Non-Active School Property Calculations, if those costs are current, which is also part of the KGR. In addition to that, I would ask for a motion to target the closing date of Burtville Elementary to June 30. I attended the Electoral Board Meeting, just as a matter of information, last Tuesday. As part of the discussion at the Electoral Board Meeting, one of the Electoral Board members believes that it should stay open through November of this year. The school is not a participant in determining where the registrar's office should be. That belongs between the Electoral Board, the registrar, board supervisors, and the county administrator. However, they are using as the fact that this board has never said that they had to move, therefore I ask for that motion to target June 30 as that date. If we need to make accommodations or adjustments later, we can, but I would hope that there would be able to be support for that, so that we can basically determine one way or the other, we should have all of the information for the feasibility study, whether we're going to be able to proceed with the renovation of that to make it a primary school. If not, what will be the next steps, anticipated closure. Irrespective of either one of those two circumstances, the registrar's office won't be able to be there. So this will help accommodate that, so I will ask for that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, I will second it for discussion.
Based on conversations I've had this week, I would prefer to wait until we get the results of the feasibility study before we do any kind of vote on something like that.
I've had conversations with myself, and I think we should wait before we make a move like that.
I guess I'm still a little confused as to why we're pushing this when discussions with the board of supervisors has already presented that they are in the process of moving. In addition to that, the timeframes that the registrar has to follow with the closeness to early elections, I did the timeline out, unless I did it inaccurately, which is possible, it's looking like it's not going to be until after the elections in November. I also am under the understanding that this is going to happen per communications, it's going to happen. So why are we trying to push the narrative on this? I don't understand that.
The reason that I'm suggesting that is, the timeline, and there is a member of the Electoral Board sitting in the audience, so he can correct me if I say something that's inaccurate. A document, I believe, has been sent from the registrar to the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors will vote next Thursday to send a letter to the Attorney General. The Attorney General has 60 days to respond. If he does not respond in that 60 days, then the registrar's office can be moved. The registrar's office cannot be moved prior to an election. The election is June, the primary is June 17th. So after June 17th, it could be moved because the next election is not until 45 days before November, so that's sometime in September. So there would be the ballots of June, July, and August to move the registrar. The unfortunate thing is, is a member of the Electoral Board says that the school board's never said we have to move at all. And whether we have funding, once we know what the expectation is from the feasibility study, now, I believe we could hold this till May if we absolutely have to. I don't, I personally don't see a reason to do that. If we need to change it in May, we can always change it, but in the meantime, there is at least a target date that gives the board of supervisors and the county administrator the understanding that the understanding that the registrar will move.
Like Ms. Duncan said, I think they've already made that determination, that they're going to move.
Not according to the Electoral Board.
But the Electoral Board does not make the decision as far as where they stay. That is the board of supervisors' decision, am I correct?
Well, that is the argument at times, and that's why I'm saying, there is a, it's not the school board's game. The only part that the school board has to play is, is that we are responsible for the buildings. So if we say that the tentative closure date is June 30, but in May we decide, nope, it's not going to change, let's move it, then we could make the adjustment, but if we, if we don't declare a date, at least one member of the Electoral Board is going to say, the school board has never said we have to move, so we don't have to. Mr. Outlaw?
I think it would behoove the Electoral Board and the registrar to move as soon after the June primary as possible because we have another election, the general election coming up in November. Back that up 45 days to when early voting starts and they're going to have some adjustments and whatnot and the earlier they move after the June primary, that will give them more time to get prepared for the general election, which is, will be here before we know it.
I'm just not ready to put dates on it yet. I need more information and based off conversations I've had, that's, the registrar doesn't think that he can do what he needs to do at the new place. So I'm not ready to put dates on it yet.
I'm just, I'm extremely concerned because as it was presented to us tonight, we've, we've already lost, our county has lost a very valuable resource as of the end of this month. The, forgive me, I don't remember the name of it, but the food distribution site is leaving effective the end of the month, whereas in, they're going to start removing their things. They serviced over 200 families a month. We know we wanted to make this change, perhaps, but we knew we wanted to plan. I agreed to the feasibility study because I want to know what I have. I do not want something to siphon money off of us, but in the same token, I need to know what I have before I can make a decision based on what I have. And we've already created a lack where there's already a need in our community, which is food insecurity. It is there, it is present. Our county gets free lunches, they get free lunches for a reason, because they are impoverished individuals. There are children who come to school and this is the only meal that they will get. We, as a result of our communications and as a result of our desires, which our students come first, I will always make a decision based on the best for our students in the school system, not based on the public, not based on the board of supervisors or not based on my own agenda, what's going to serve them the best. And as a result, it has caused, to me and my thoughts, early departure of our feedmore service programs. Do we need to make changes? Yes, something needs to happen. We need to use it or it needs to go. I'm with, I'm with everybody on that, but I do not think now is the time to cause more disservice or, or, disservice wasn't the right word, but to cause more upheaval when we don't even know what we're going to do. They know what we want. They know that something's going to change. They already know this. They have confirmed this. They've told the registrar, you're going to have to move. They made them a counter because they know they are going to be moved. And I understand there's people who don't want to go, that's between them and the board of supervisors, nothing with us. They're on a month-to-month lease now, correct?
Who the registrar was.
Yes.
The registrar's there until the board of supervisors decides that they are going to move. So there isn't really a month-to-month. They do pay us, but it's just, we're waiting for a date.
So as soon as we know what we're going to do, I will stand behind anybody and say, this is going to be our unified decision, but we don't know what we're going to do yet. And that decision could take us months out, depending upon what we hear.
I agree.
I'm just not up for uprooting everything until the time comes. Give us consistency because we've already lost that service and that could have stayed there until the time came.
I agree, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Rowe, question. Did I understand you correctly to say that the registrar said that the building in Blackstone is not suitable for his operation?
That's what I, that's what he told me, yes.
Mr. Oliver, have you heard anything to that subject?
So we'll comment right now, I'll comment as an individual, not on behalf of the Electoral Board. There have been discussions publicly, even at board meetings, where the registrar does not believe that he will be able to conduct business in the way that he wishes to. And he has submitted a letter on his behalf, under himself as the registrar, to, I believe, Mr. Bowen regarding that as well as the chairman for the board of supervisors. And to piggyback off of what Mr. Abbott has spoken earlier, he is 100% correct that we have 60 days, once a letter has been submitted, a request for the board of supervisors to submit that letter to the Attorney General's Office has been made. How they move forward with that and when they conduct that will be their choice. The only thing that was missing was after the Attorney General's Office, there is one more step and that is that the request then has to go to Richmond, which is basically the state electoral board and they will do it. And one of the things that was brought up with whether or not there are legal issues or legal guidelines that may or may not be met, the decision was made that when moving forward, if there is approval by the Attorney General's Office and there is approval by Richmond, then therefore it is their job and it is their duty to make sure that that site is feasible according with the Virginia statutes. And that is how, based upon the vote and everything that was discussed publicly at our board meeting, we move forward. So whether or not the registrar agrees or disagrees or has any type of issues whatsoever, we have done our duty to basically place it at the hands of the people in the state of Virginia, that it is their job and their duty to make sure that the place is feasible.
My understanding, and I, this may be wrong, that the state board of elections has to approve this move.
That is correct. It's after the Attorney General's Office has their 60 days to review it.
Thank you. I would like to make a friendly change to the motion and that we put that off until next month's meeting and let's move forward with getting all of the information so that we can make a more informed vote at that time. This is all pretty new stuff for most of us and I've heard nothing from anybody other than, well, I have heard, but not from the general population, but that would be a friendly amendment.
Well, I withdraw the motion. We can table, we can table this till May. It is my considered opinion, though, that we're going to make a decision, one way or the other, and whichever way we make it, the registrar cannot be in that building. Can't be in there if we turn it into a school, can't be in there if we shut it down. Whether the registrar wants to move or not has nothing to do with this board. This board runs the building, none of that other stuff.
That's true. And this, this board has to make the decision of what to do after that.
So.
It has to be a board decision.
Can you feel confident, Ms. Meyer, that we will have the information from the company that's doing the feasibility study by next board meeting?
The last call that I had with them in March was that they would have the draft to us by end of April, so I'm going to reach out to him on Monday to get some confirmation on that.
Is it possible then, maybe in our work session on May 23rd, to present that information?
Very possible if we have it, yes.
Let's make an informed decision, it's not, not just.
April 13th, right?
Yeah, April 23rd, yes.
May I have the closed meeting resolution, please?
Pursuant to Section 2 dash 2, I'm sorry, 2.2 dash 3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convenia close meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. A, the consideration of personnel for 11 appointments, six substitute teachers, one summer school nurse, one reset academy monitor and one temporary instructor, one summer school coordinator, one gifted facilitator. B, informational, five redignations and C, personnel matters.
Heard the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.